So we'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming for the October 25th Wyndham Elementary School Board Meeting. Thank you, Brian, for recording. Okay, so additions, deletions to the agenda. Anybody? Okay, hearing none, correspondence.
I have one.
Yep, absolutely. Go ahead, Michael.
I would like to discuss the possible, or the ability to increase the security of the school.
Okay, so we could add that to, I mean, we've talked about this before. So do we want to add it to old business or new business? Bill, you let me know.
Well, I think it'd be appropriate under old business, C.
Great, so C, school security. Great, thank you, Michael. Anybody else?
Yes, I would like to add a conversation about grants.
Dynamite. Again, I kind of feel like we've talked about that before, so can we make that D? Bill, is that all right, grants?
Good call.
All right. Okay, so moving on to, wait, correspondence. I don't, I haven't had any.
You have a letter in your packet that I sent to the board from the parent. I put it under old business because it had been requested in the spring, but it's also correspondence. So just to make a note of that.
Great, thank you. Okay, so that's going to be in where I see that, A, parent request access for home studies. Dynamite, any other correspondents? Okay, hearing none, moving on to members of the public.
I had correspondence too.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So I have questions about the support staff. Like what our options are for support staff. So I've talked to Stephanie some, and so the way I understand it is after a child is evaluated, they will determine whether support staff from the WCSU is needed or whether it comes from the teacher based on how the evaluation goes. Because we sign the Title I permission slips at the beginning of the year. So I assumed kids that needed support staff, that we would start maybe seeing people from the WCSU come up to offer services. You know, one of my children has a 504 in place. I don't know what that entitles him to, but, you know, he needs support with math. So I'm hoping.
Bill, I'm sorry. Bill, am I seeing this as B under new business, WCSU Special Education? Stephanie, is that who you talked, Stephanie got it? Hancock? I'm sorry if I'm not saying that properly.
Yes, I believe that's where it would fall.
Okay, so yeah, that's on the agenda for sure. Thank you, Crystal. Any other members of the public?
One more thing.
Yeah, sure.
Some people have messaged me, and I guess they're having a problem with the link.
The link typically in the past couple of months has not been an active link. They have to copy that link and paste it in their browser in order to get in the meeting. It used to be a clickable link. I don't know what's changed or why that's happened, but you just got to copy it and paste it in, and you need it.
Bill, do you have any insight on that, copying and pasting, which I can tell you I would not know how to do?
They did it, man.
No, I have not encountered that problem. I apologize. Looks like we've got about 15 people that easily could get in, so I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
They did it, man.
I had to copy it and paste it too. The link that I got wasn't active.
So perhaps next time when I send Ellen McDuffie the agenda to send out to the community, I will make that addition?
If, yeah, if they can make the link just clickable, that would be nice.
Copy and paste.
Not copy and paste.
Not copy and paste.
Just, you should be able to just click the link. That's how it was, obviously. I don't know what's changed over the past few months, but it used to be that you could just go on the agenda, click the blue thing, and you'd go right there. Now you have to highlight it, copy it, paste it to get here.
All right, so who would I talk to about that?
Make a note when I make the next agenda to test it before I send it to you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, if there's no other members of the public? No? Okay, we'll move on then to item one, old business, parent request access for home study student.
Thought you guys had made a decision about this already.
So the board made a decision last spring on this, and the parent is just simply asking if the board would allow it this year. And just to rehash, what the board's advice from the attorney was, you can do this, but to be cautious that if you say yes to this, you are setting a precedent to say yes to anyone else. And you do not receive any ADM credit for a student who is using the services of the Wyndham School District who lives outside of the district.
And I think the bigger concern that people had was that any special needs or further expenses would be on the school that came with one of those children if that was the case. Is that correct?
Yeah, you make, once you accept the student, you accept the total student. So if that student, and then if you accept one student and then choose not to accept another student because of that, then you're in discrimination territory.
Okay, wow, because I know in the past we've had some students that have participated in our, I guess, soccer. I thought we played kids in our art, but I, yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, obviously this is up for discussion. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I would say I understand those risks, but they are part of our community, and what they're asking for, I think, is with or without setting precedent, I think each case is individually decided upon. So the proximity to where this family lives to the school is relatively quite close to participate. So me personally, I think, I think it's fine. But I think the last time that that wasn't the common opinion, that's okay, and that's just kind of where I stand on that.
So Bill, I got the impression this would be setting a precedent, and it's not each individual case by case.
The board would have to make individual cases. Every case is individual. But if you make a decision to say yes to this, and then you have a second request, it can be expected that the second request would reference this decision, saying, well, you said yes to them, why are you saying no to me? Are you discriminating against me for some reason?
Oh, we're talking about it.
Beth?
Yes, absolutely, Russ. Go ahead.
I think Bill, those point is very well made, and precedents are things that can bite you in the back end very quickly. And I think being a small district and having a limited amount of resources, I think we would be very foolish to extend an opportunity for someone who's not an immediate member and resident of Wyndham to attend our school. You're asking for problems down the road. And even though I think Abigail might have empathy for that person, I think we have to be aware of what the community at large in Wyndham, what responsibility they would have to face, and I don't think it's fair to ask them to do that.
Okay.
Michael's got his hand.
Russ, go ahead, Michael.
I know the cost for potential special education was brought up, but I would like to point out in this case that individual would be part of the supervisory union. And unless I'm mistaken, the special education costs for the supervisory union are divided up amongst the schools, so that would be sort of a moot point.
Michael is correct in that if the person lives in the SU, the special education costs or actually all multi-tiered system of support costs are shared amongst the district by ADM, so Michael is correct. But if you do, again, this is the board's decision, but if you say yes to this and you say no to somebody else who's not in the district, then again, you would be coming up against the question of defending that you said yes because they're part of your SU, but you're going to say no to somebody who's maybe not a part of the SU. But if they require any kind of services, then again, you'd be getting into territory of why are you saying no? Are they, is it because they're not a part of the SU? Or is it because they might have a 504 or IEP or other circumstances that would cause additional costs? Again, I have no skin in this game. I'm just repeating what the attorney's advice was to the board.
I personally feel, thank you, Bill, but I personally feel even having the conversation of whether the children have special needs or not have special needs is discriminatory in itself. They're asking for, what is it, for art and, what was the other class that they wanted to participate in?
Gym.
And gym. So there's children in our community that want to do art and gym. I don't care if there's anything at all going on different. They want to do art and gym. They live very close to the school. There could be other people in the district or outside of the district that live far away that would maybe ask that. But I think the fact that they're so close to our community is a reasonable request to participate in art and gym. That's just my thought, but I think that even having the conversation of whether there's precedents or not, that's not even a part of it. It's a part of that there's kids in the community. That's, I think, where it should go. Thank you.
Thanks, Abby. So you're, all right, Crystal, real quick. So Abby, you're feeling like, because these people are within our supervisory union, and we have had students in the past that have participated in our, I think, more after-school, but I do think also our art. So that's what we're talking about right now, is within our supervisory union.
Beth, do we know what town they live in?
Yes, we do. They live in West Townsend.
In West Townsend. Is there a reason why they can't go to the West Townsend School?
To the Townsend School? They're homeschoolers. So we've had other homeschoolers in the past who actually live in Wyndham who have participated in some of our extracurricular activities. Am I saying that right?
You are.
It's not, it's not the poor classes, it's extracurricular, so, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Crystal.
So my only concern would be that we're not getting the ADM for them, which is kind of huge for such a small school. And with, you know, finances, a lot of finance questions being raised. We've had some financial things come up that were so unexpected. I would be a little concerned that if we're not getting the ADM for them and we provide a service, you know, your next budget cycle, it could be a problem.
Okay.
You have two hands, Russ and Michael.
Go ahead, Russ.
I would like to echo what Crystal has said. In our small district, average daily membership is a key number for us. One or two students in addition to the ADM would be very helpful to us. But looking at this situation, we have potential liability with no benefit. So it looks like it could be an emotional decision, but if we had 30 or 35 students in our school, one more student, not having ADM wouldn't mean anything. But when we have 18 or 19 and we're not getting an average daily membership number from that student, it seems foolish to extend the opportunity for liability.
Okay, thank you, Russ. Michael.
And what do you mean by liability, Russ? What's the liability?
The liability can be a number of things. You know, the special education cost is shared. Our number of students are 1% of the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, so our share is 1% of whatever that might be. But we're also paying 1% of everybody else's special education cost within the WCSU. And as far as I can see, if we don't get an average daily membership count from the, from the family and they live in West Townsend, why can't they go down the hill and then join the West Townsend group? I mean, it's their district. They can go down and enjoy it.
Right, and so if the special education that could potentially be there for art and gym, even if that was taken away, like I said, because it's like, I feel like discriminatory to even go there, to take that away, we're looking at, I believe the reason they are asking our school is when it's a small school, so that would be for home school children to transition to would be, you know, an easier transition. Still going to be a lot more kids than they're used to. And it's closer in actuality for where they're living, so.
Simply because it's convenient, simply because it's convenient doesn't mean that it's good for the district.
Okay.
It's good for the family, but not for the district.
Sometimes it takes a village, though. All right, thank you.
Our, any, oh, Bridget Blanchard.
Michael, then Bridget.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Michael.
I have just a couple of comments. One is that in order to increase our, the membership, let's say, of our small school, we have to provide a welcoming at school. And if we're solely going to look at this in terms of if it's not convenient for them too bad, then that's unfortunate, we should be looking at being welcoming to everybody, as many as we can, and reasonably. In this specific case, and I don't know the details, I haven't seen the letter, but I have sort of an inkling of who this might be. We're talking about a significant change or distance between our school and the Townsend School. So I can see, and they also would have to navigate the relatively large belt, so I can see why they would want to come up here and stay up here. We, I guess we keep talking about this special education thing. I think that's kind of silly, because like I said before, the supervisory union picks up the cost, and then all the schools split it up. If they need those resources, they would also have those resources available, and we would pay the same amount if they went to Townsend, because we would pick up a portion of those costs that they would need. So that's like the moot point. I don't know why that even comes up. That's silly. In terms of whether this sets precedence for other individuals participating in our school that are quote-unquote outside of the district or whatnot, I think it's a reasonable argument for us to make that due to this specific case's proximity to our school, a dangerous, potentially dangerous hill for them to navigate, and their desire to participate in extracurricular activities, we could argue that we could reasonably provide that same access to somebody in the exact same situation. And if they weren't, then I think we could reasonably argue that it wouldn't fit our school due to a bunch of different reasons to include a financial disadvantage. In terms of how this might affect our finances, it's one kid in extracurricular activities. I cannot imagine a situation where it's going to increase our cost. We're not going to have to hire another employee to watch them during art. We're not going to have to hire another employee to watch them during PE. Maybe there's a potential increase of cost with art supplies. However, I'm certain if that is an issue, the school could always look out and contact some of the local community members who include some nonprofits around that I hear about. In fact, I would be willing to help donate some money to make sure they get art. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we had Bridget Blanchard. Is she still on?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I think I put my hand out.
No, Bridget, you're good. Go ahead.
So what is, so the average daily membership, what does that entail? Because is there something that this homeschooled child could follow our curriculum at home to an extent to be able to participate?
Bill, I'll let you answer that.
Bridget, the question before the board is, should they allow the home school student who does not live in the district to participate in art and gym? So there would be no requirement for curriculum following at home. It would simply be, the student would be allowed to physically be at the school and participate in art and gym while not being a resident of Wyndham or their parents living in Wyndham.
Okay, but I just, I heard that average daily membership was like what people wanted to get up. So even if they were like involved with the school, they couldn't be because they're in a different town. It's weird, like.
You got it. You got it, Bridget.
Okay.
They are, yeah.
Okay, and it's my understanding, Bridget, that was a really good question, but Bill, it's my understanding at this point where our ADM is what it is. I don't, isn't it October or something?
No, we are counting right now. We do it, this is, this is the moment. We are doing it right now.
Through the month of October, okay.
You have a hand for parent?
Aaron Keigho, go ahead.
So, hi, everyone. I guess I am, I guess I have some questions with this question since we're gonna, there's a possibility of allowing a student in that doesn't live in the district. Whether or not they have special needs or not doesn't. But, so I have a child that does have an IEP who is yelling at me right now that I, that he is not really allowed to, he's not allowed to get the full services that he's needed at Townsend because we're not a resident there. Wyndham doesn't offer pre-K for his IEP. So with that, you know, he goes down to Manchester and does receive services down there via the district, but not all the services because they can't provide somebody for all the services that he needs. So that comes out of my pocket. So I guess with that, if it's that question, I mean, I'm playing devil's advocate here. Why would we allow somebody else to come in to use our services where I can't get my son to use the services or the full extent of his services that he needs? That's it.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Wow, this is a tough one. Is there anybody else that wanted to say something?
I'd like to move the question.
We got more comments.
Sorry, go ahead, Crystal. Just one last thing. My other concern is, is this request is from a student that's not in our district. So even though it's just the extracurriculars, at the same time, we've had people request to go down the hill, and they've been told no. So I understand, maybe this family doesn't want to drive the hill. We live where we live. One of the first things I was told by my husband was, if you can't drive that hill, take yourself right back to New York. So I think we have to be careful allowing, even for gym and art, a kid from another district.
I have a question.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Bridget.
So if you, and maybe this was answered before I came in, if you allow the student gym and art, I know that it opens up the possibility for if there was any extra services needed, which is part of the debate, but are you required to allow them to enroll in any other way outside of just, like say they say I want gym and art, and then they want more? Or is that like a new question for the board?
That's a, Bill, what do you have to say about that?
Well, home study students have, that live in the district, have access to the schools within their district. You guys are not making that decision. So you guys are making a decision on a request for a very specific gym and art. If they wanted to attend more, they would have to make that new, if you said yes to this, and they wanted to come to morning meeting, then you would have to have a new request and come before the board.
So, Bill, is there the possibility that we can make it that we only accept students for these extracurriculars, art, gym? And I bring that up from knowing somebody who's a, Leland Gray, lives in the district and is taking driver's ed, but is otherwise a homeschooler. He's taking driver's ed from Leland Gray. Is that, I mean, it seems to me like that's the same, we're dealing with the same situation here.
No, that's different because that individual is older than grade six, so they are a member of the Leland Gray district.
So kids that are younger, younger kids are not considered members?
Well, it depends on where their parents live. So this family lives in Townsend, so they are members of the West River District. So if they wanted to ask for home study at Jamaica or Townsend or Newbrook, that would be the normal process. They are asking to go outside of district.
I'm sorry, I was confused. I thought you said that because they're, they're in the WCSU that they could, okay, great. Okay, I got to say before we decide on this, Abby and Michael, I completely hear you. Give a second. We've offered services before to people that are technically from Wyndham, so not West Townsend. And when I say West Townsend, I mean literally like right down the road. I get that. But it's, yeah, it's definitely a bummer. So, because I agree with Michael in the sense that I feel like we should be welcoming, but I also understand that I have to think about the Wyndham taxpayers. We're talking about art and gym, but yeah, great. And we're not talking about preschoolers either, so, which I wish there was a better way to deal with that because obviously our babies are the most important thing. So anybody else want to add anything? Okay, hearing none. I guess the question has to be called. Russ, you were calling the question before?
I was just gonna, gonna move it for a decision. I want to call the question. Let's have a vote.
Okay, I guess all is in favor of having a student come in for art and gym. I guess that's the motion we're making, Bill?
Who lives outside of the Wyndham School District.
Okay.
But in the union, but in the supervisory union.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so the motion's been made. I'm going to say I made the motion, so I guess I need a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. And I'm not happy about it at all. I'll make that point. You got that, Brian? Thank you. And I'm sorry, Abby, I agree with you. We are a village. I'm fucking pissed about this one.
It's all right. It's a tough one, though. We got this.
Fucking bullshit. Did you get that too, Brian? Good, I hope so. I hope you did. All right, approval of minutes from 9:20:22. I didn't read them. Quite frankly, not interested. Anybody want to make a motion on the approval of minutes from 9:20:22?
Make a motion. We approved the minutes. It's submitted.
Can I get a second?
I second.
Great. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Michael, Wyndham Elementary School Security.
As you recall, I submitted a request to the board to look at increasing the potential security of the school for various number of reasons. I submitted sort of rough draft plans of some sort of basic fence. for various number of reasons. Um, I submitted sort of rough draft plans of some sort of basic fencing, um, basically to slow people down, being able to access the yard. I also included plans, um, to be able to allow access to folks during, like to the playground, for instance, during, um, non-school times. Um, I think it's worth the discussion, um, to think about ways to limit access to the school. For instance, the side door that goes to the gym is open often and the doors behind that access the, um, classrooms are also open. Um, the public has a real, really easy access to the school grounds in general. Also, um, during the school day, there's potential of children, um, sort of frolicking off into the woods. And I think it's important to have and provide access to the woods, but I think it should be controlled in a safe way with appropriate, um, supervision. Uh, I know that you're gonna talk to James about this. I don't know if you had the opportunity to discuss it with him.
Yes, I have.
Uh, does it sound possible to him, I guess? Um, and I guess, I'm just interested in wondering if the school board is interested in...
Uh, was that, Abby, you cut out there, Michael?
Michael, I think you accidentally hit your off button there.
Cut off.
Okay, yep, sorry, just kidding. Uh, yeah, so basically, I think it would be appropriate for us to look at at least some basic fencing to increase the security. Um, and I don't know if the school board is prepared to think about that or look at that, but, um, if we aren't at this meeting, I think it should be on the next meeting as a high priority. I think we're only looking at increased violence in our nation as a whole. And I think we are silly if we think that our community is immune from that. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, thank you, Mike. But yes, I did talk to James Lawler, who's the constable in town, and also my brother, just for clarification. Um, he does have, um, an opinion on that and I, I, I would like for him, and I also think it would be prudent for us to, um, aside from Sheriff Lakin, Lakin, who comes up here, Robert Lakin, um, to monitor speeders, that sort of thing. I feel like between Sheriff Lakin, Bill, I don't know if there's an, um, if there's somebody within the state who, uh, covers school security, because obviously this needs to have the people who, this is what they do. Um, they need to be here having this discussion with us. It's obviously not a discussion for, uh, the board members or community members, aside from wanting to talk about it. I feel like we need to have people in the know that can advise us on this, um, this, uh, direction from, uh, Michael Pelton.
Uh, so, uh, Mickey has met with the state representative, Mark Moody, um, this summer, I believe. Mickey had a long meeting with Mr. Moody about the school's safety. And that would be the person that you would, uh, need Mickey to reach out to, to, uh, to run this by. He is the state representative from, I believe, Margolis Healy, that the, the state of Vermont provides to schools for consultation.
Okay. Are you, are you cool with that, talking to him? And then I can talk to, uh, the constable and I can also talk to Sheriff Lakin, uh, because he's up here a lot. He knows the school, he cares about the community. So does that sound good with you, Michael? If we put that on the agenda for the November meeting?
Um, I guess that's the, uh, that's the direction we have to go. I just, um, would encourage the board to move along as reasonably fast as possible.
Move.
Um, we're getting into the winter season, so it's harder to put up fencing and such like that. Um, I can tell you tactically, from my previous, uh, uh, involvement in security in the prison field, let's say, um, the school is wide open. So if we, uh, have an incident in our community, it's not going to be a good day. The sheriff's department and the, and DSP are a long ways away. And we do not have a system in place to honestly secure our building, building in a safe, difficult way.
Okay.
Seth?
Uh, yes, Russ, go ahead.
Well, I, I realize this subject was talked about a while ago. So I've gone to several schools in Jamaica, Grafton, Townsend, uh, the Mountain School, New Brook School, Leland and Gray, et cetera, over in Chester to their, both their high school and to the middle school, the elementary and middle school. And none of them have fences around them. So I'm wondering, why are we talking about putting a fence up? It's a little bit silly. Just lock the doors. Have, in many of the schools, they lock their doors. I've been to the school and just walked in the front door at eight thirty or nine o'clock in the morning. I mean, there has to be a, a routine that the professionals within the building, when they're in there, the doors are locked.
Okay.
That's all it is. We don't need to have fences put around and razor wire at the top of it. That's, that's ridiculous.
Okay.
If other schools were putting up fences and razor wire, then I'd say, okay. But I, there's no other fences around any other schools in this area.
Okay, uh, Russ, I just want to remind you as a board member, nobody, uh, community member, parent, um, nobody's, uh, concerns are silly nor ridiculous. Um, and so we're gonna move forward and put this on the agenda for November and we're gonna hear from the professionals. And, uh, that's it. And Crystal, go ahead.
So, thank you for putting it on the agenda.
Yep.
Uh, so you're gonna ask, uh, your brother, Officer Lakin, and we're gonna ask this other guy to join?
Yes.
Perfect. But my question, um, I'd like to hear from Mickey. Because Mickey's outside with the kids, um, you know, if we have a fence, like, I, I know the kids do drills, cause the boys tell me, um, what, let's say, God forbid, active shooter, and there's a fence, what does that do to your escape route? If you could speak to that?
Am I allowed to speak to that, Bill?
Uh, yeah, this is a board meeting.
Yeah, just making sure I don't want to say anything I'm not supposed to say. Um, what I was told from the couple people that I spoke to about this is that the current drill for an active shooter is to get out and away from the building as fast as possible. And they had grave concerns about the kids being trapped by the fence and easy targets when they're trying to get away from a shooter. Whether that's the only opinion or not, or that's the correct way to think about it, I don't know. But that was the one thing that was presented to me when I started checking about this concern.
Cause that is a little bit of a concern to me.
Right.
That I don't, I, I want to make sure that like we're not all fenced in because I would be concerned that our kids are fenced into a square box. Whereas right now, even though I don't know the route, because the boys will tell you, it's top secret. You don't tell anybody the route, um, but they know that you run to the woods. There's a certain route they take. So, um, when we discuss this next time, if we could be pretty thoughtful about what the kids already know?
And again, that guy, Mark Moody, is like the foremost expert in the state supposedly on all this stuff. So he will give us a really great opinion, I'm sure, of what makes sense and what's based on whatever they have been studying.
And maybe we could possibly do like a parent, um, day or evening with him and maybe the parents would feel more secure if they actually met with him?
Yeah, I'm sure he would love that.
So I, I think if, if we can, just because I'm assuming Mark Moody's probably pretty busy, if we can add it to our November agenda, that would be, parents can show up. They can show up here in person. They can show up on Zoom. But if, if we're gonna make everybody feel secure, um, and I get both sides, um, that's what needs to happen. So that's what's gonna happen. And if we need to alter our meeting based on Mark Moody, then that's what we're gonna do. Does that seem fair?
It does.
Great. Bridgette?
Uh, would it help to, if we, we put together an evacuation plan that we did at the beginning of the year that we sent to Bill? Like that's our school plan. Would it help if we like share that in November and we can share what we do? And we don't, we don't have to give away, uh, away any secret routes on the voice, but just like, like who is called and what we do and kind of share that.
Okay. All right, great, so.
And I have a question.
Yep, I'm sorry, real quick. So we're all in agreement that we're gonna have this on the agenda for November and we're gonna work, uh, with Mark Moody, the constable, and, um, I, I think it'd be prudent to bring in Sheriff Lakin, um, just so we're all on the same page. So, um, Abby, you had a question and I see Michael also has a question.
Yes, if, uh, Mr. Moody is unable to attend our next meeting, um, could we possibly consider doing a special meeting specifically around this on another date that would work better to include him, maybe prior to our next, uh, meeting? That way it stays on the agenda and if we have it then, then we have it then. But if we need to do something, uh, special beforehand, we can report on it at the next meeting.
Yeah, or, yeah, what I was saying is that, well, we have our next scheduled board meeting, but if that doesn't work, maybe we need to just adjust our board meeting. So yes, one way or the other, um, that is gonna be one of our main topics for the November meeting. Um, and I will make sure to get that out to Ellen McDuffie and obviously give it to Bridgette to send out to all the parents. Um, Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I'm not asking for razor wire and, you know, ten-foot fences. Uh, in fact, as you'll notice, if they look at the submission that I put in there, I was actually not, um, putting huge fencing. I included fencing that we could actually get through and see through. And it doesn't fully enclose the yard because I had just that thought in terms of, well, how do we make it so the kids can do what they need to do? So I, I did think about those things and I'm not looking for a castle here. I'm basically trying to slow down the visibility and the access from the roads and parking lot, um, to the schoolyard. That's what we're doing. We're providing a small physical barrier and a visual barrier to slow down, uh, some sort of nefarious actor, um, from seeing and engaging our kids when we don't want them to. That includes an active shooter, but it also includes, uh, people who are, have other nefarious intents. Um, that's all I got. Thanks.
No, Michael, there's absolutely nothing wrong. You, you've got kids in this school. I have the luxury of having my, you know, one last one in, as a senior at Leland Gray, so do not apologize. I, my heart literally goes out to all of you with having to deal with this. Again, bullshit. Did you get that, Brian? Great. So no, no apologies whatsoever. We're gonna talk about it in November. All right, um, unless there's any other discussion about this, uh, we'll move on to, uh, D, which is grants.
Thank you. So I just have a few quick questions. Um, so Friends of the Wyndham School House is researching various grants. Um, and there's a bunch that are being looked at. Some are specific to the organization. Some would be the organization and, say, Wyndham Elementary School. Others would be the organization and Wyndham Elementary School, potentially Jamaica School, West Townsend, um, larger, um, application for the grant. With those other examples, for the ones that involve Wyndham Elementary School, um, or the larger grants that extend even further than that, who is the contact person? Um, that could be, would collaborate, um, for those larger grants that would be more inclusive?
Oof.
To like sign off and say, we'll do an MOU with and, and figure something out?
Bill?
Well, we don't have a grant writer on staff, so we do not oversee any grant writing. Um, but the person, uh, to contact about preparing to write a grant and being prepared for servicing a grant would be Lori Gardner.
Oh, fabulous.
But, uh, just want to be clear, we don't have an individual that has the ability to organize different groups and write grants for that nature. But, uh, the Lori wouldn't.
Taking on from the, the FWS that they would be writing, um, on behalf of the nonprofit. So, um, there's just various things that have, have come up that would benefit, you know, the greater community, um, that could potentially work. So it's just wanting to know who to include in those conversations. Um, clearly Mickey will be included in those, as well. Um, but just curious because it, it falls into some significant money that could come in and help in various ways. So, um, you know, hopefully the, uh, the supervisory union gets a grant writer because there is a lot of options out there. Um, if there's anybody in the community that's interested in learning more about grants, uh, let me know because we are looking into it. So, um, hopefully we'll have some good stuff in the pipeline in the month. So, thank you.
Great. Um, thank you, Abby. I have been in touch with somebody in the community, um, who did write grants, um, through some aspect of, for the town. So I can shoot an email, uh, to give you her contact information. I, I know you know her, so, but she said that she would be willing to act like as an advisor. Um, so I will be sure to do that tonight. Okay, any other discussion on grants? I see a hand. Oh, my glasses on.
Beth, can I just, um, ask Abby, Abby, if you would just give me a call or shoot me an email? Um, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, we do get grants through the Agency of Education and that type of thing. I just want to make sure we're not double, uh, you know, not double dipping, that's not the right word, but we're not going for the same grants, uh, type of grants. Um, so, you know, we, it's good to have a coordinated effort, uh, but not trying to be competitive with each other.
Exactly. And that's where the MOU would come in and the collaboration. But I wasn't sure who to begin collaborating without a grant writer or somebody in that position. So lucky you. Yeah, so we'll be talking soon, Lori.
Thanks, Abby. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Any other discussion about grants? Okay, uh, we're moving on to new business. Crystal will report.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. Those of you that are wondering why I stand, it's just easier for me. I feel better moving. I like to move my hands. I like to move my legs. So I'm gonna be reading something. I don't want to be sitting down. Now that the first six weeks of school are over, classrooms can really begin to delve into some more focused academics. Using the results from the Ames Web and any other classroom assessments and observations, the teachers can sharpen their focus to the students' independent levels for math and language arts. A whole class lesson will likely start the class time as a group, but as time passes, the work can be more individually tailored to meet specific needs. Here in Wyndham, we follow the MTSS framework that all the other schools follow in the supervisory union. Universal instruction is administered to all students in the classrooms, differentiated as needed during whole group time. Minor interventions are then introduced as needed by the classroom teacher for struggling students, such as preferential seating, one-to-one review of instructions or objectives, or any other simple change that results in positive outcomes for the student in this initial learning phase. Individual students who are struggling receive more one-on-one time with the teacher during class work time. Small groups are formed to meet the needs of multiple students struggling on similar topics. More individual help, designed and set up by the classroom teacher with consultation of the academic support team, can be provided by the classroom teacher or provided by another adult, who is provided with specific intervention to deliver with progress monitoring and goal measurement targets, while being in constant communication with the classroom teacher about what is working, what is mastered, or what needs to be modified. If there is something discovered that is outside the instructional scope, such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, or speech services, then the special education department is contacted and Stephanie, the director of special education for the supervisory union, works to set up a screening. If an IEP or 504 is deemed necessary at any point, there is a meeting to discuss additional services and a more in-depth plan to meet the students' individual needs. The art program is up and running with the students working on Van Gogh paintings the past few weeks. Casey, the art teacher, is amazing with our students and it's such a great thing to see the students fully engaged in the multipurpose room with art every Thursday afternoon. This is long overdue for our school and is really benefiting us all, staff and students, very positively. Along with the new art program, the upper grade class had their first visit to the Brattleboro Museum and Arts Center on Tuesday, September thirteenth. The theme of the exhibits was felt. There were several exhibits that used felt to create textured and extremely brightly colored. There were several exhibits that used felt to create textured and extremely brightly colored pieces. However, the most popular piece was the one that had five to six large white chrysalises hanging from the ceiling that the students could actually touch and interact with. They all walked around in between them, hugging them. I thought we would never get out of there. We will be heading back for our second visit on November 29th, if anyone would like to join us. This month, both Natalie and Mr. PJ attended grade level meetings with the other members of the Supervisory Union that teach similar grade levels. This is a great time to connect with colleagues while also gaining some new insights about math from our team members and district experts. Parent-teacher conferences were held just over a week ago, with all families having the opportunity to meet with their child's teacher to discuss progress to this point in the year. A huge thank you to Ms. Natalie for creating some beautiful displays in the all-purpose room to show off some of the amazing work of our students. Bridgette, I believe, was a part of that as well. Thank you, Bridgette. We had our first cold mornings at the end of September, and keeping with tradition, of course, the heat refused to come on. Alliance was contacted by CORD, thanks, CORD, and they spent some time here to clean some crud off of some sensor, and voila, the heat has been working well ever since. I know for one, Ms. Sandy is very grateful to have a warm classroom and not be wearing her coat on a daily basis. Also, in late September, we had our first impromptu fire drill. Following the schedule set out by the state, we will have monthly drills for fire shelter in place and for evacuating the building. Fire Safety Week was also earlier this month, with the volunteer firefighters here at school to teach the students about fire safety. On the night of Thursday, September 29th, Leland and Gray held their Triumph induction ceremony at the church on the Towns in Common. For those of you who are unfamiliar with that, it is the National Honor Society for Music, and it stands for Modern Music Masters, hence the name Triumph. My son Alex is one of four current and returning members of this group who had to be in attendance to induct the six new incoming members. So there's only four people currently that are members, and they were inducting six new members into the Triumph. Of those six inductees, two of them were Wyndham Elementary graduates, Luca Posey and Mary McDonald. Beth was also there. That means that our tiny school that represents less than 5% of the Leland and Gray population made up 33% of the new inductees. This speaks volumes to the multiple opportunities for musical enhancement and development at our school. I want to offer another big thank you to Sally Newton and Kate Ullman for inspiring and teaching our students how to appreciate, how to perform, and how to love music while instilling the confidence needed to become modern musical masters. It was yet another.
Yay!
Thank you, Bill. Yet another great evening to be proud of our Wyndham graduates, who, by the way, also make up 9% of the boys' soccer team and 17% of the girls' varsity soccer team as well, even though we are just over 4% of the population of the school. That, for one, makes me really proud and really excited. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Yeah, it was great. It was a super awesome night, and it was really exciting, and going to those soccer games is wonderful. Luca, as a freshman, scored a goal. Mary just scored a goal last week as well. It's really an amazing thing to see the success our students are having when they leave the school.
And Mary was also inducted into the National Honor Society.
National Honor Society, on top of it.
Bill was there and saw me in tears, which I just can't help. Great, any questions for your principal? Okay, hearing none. Ah, I lost my agenda. Sorry, where are we? WCSU special, oh, education, thank you. Stephanie?
Hi there, everybody. So originally, I was asked to come on and kind of explain how supports can be brought to Wyndham Elementary School. And Mickey did a really great job outlining the multi-tiered system of support, talking about the local comprehensive assessment system, and ways in which students are identified for whether or not they're in need of different levels of support. As Mickey outlined, it was from the lens of a small school, which is, that are able to differentiate and do smaller groups, where a lot of our larger schools have more, you know, supports or resources that are needed because of the scope and size of the population. So I'll go with the original plan and kind of trickle into, or piggyback on what Mickey said. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm the Director of Special Education. So the multi-tiered system of support is not specifically for special education, but it's the umbrella under which all of us operate, thinking about universal instruction as Mickey described, and then targeted for some students who are identified as struggling students, and then intensive if there are students who need, you know, specially designed kind of instruction. So there are what I can count as four pathways into special education specifically. So homeschooled students have the ability, any of the parents or guardians of those children are able to reach out to me at any time, as long as they live within our Supervisory Union, for what is called, would be called a child find obligation. So we, if a parent or guardian reaches out and says, hey, I have some questions about my student or my child. I feel like I would like to have an evaluation. We meet within 15 calendar days to consider that request, and most often honor that request and do the evaluation. Now, sometimes that is to determine IEP or special education eligibility, which would not, you know, lead to an IEP unless they're enrolled in one of our schools. And other times, it may be that they're just curious about their child's learning profile and want to do some specific testing. So that's one pathway. Another one is if a parent or guardian, so say, a student is enrolled in one of our schools, and they reach out and say, hey, I really would like to have an evaluation on my child. I have some concerns. So what we would do is meet within 15 calendar days, which usually ends up being two school weeks, just because, you know, the time of that, and it includes weekends. And we would sit down and consider that request. Now that we have a local comprehensive assessment system, we're incorporating in that discussion any assessment data that we have. It could be year-over-year data. It could be, you know, maybe the student just had AIMS Web testing, but what we would do is review that information and hopefully address the concerns of the parent or guardian through that system, because the local comprehensive assessment system is really catching students very quickly and meeting their needs before they have to get to a level of, you know, specialized instruction. So that's pathway number two. Pathway three is that if a student moves in from either any other area of the state or out of state and is already on an IEP, we then need to develop an interim IEP, and then we begin the assessment system to determine if they're eligible in Vermont, if they're coming from outside of Vermont. If they're from inside Vermont and they've already been determined eligible for an IEP in Vermont, then we would be needing to review the IEP and see within our system, do they need specialized instruction? So that's pathway number three. Number four is an internal school referral. So as Mickey talked about, with the benchmark testing that's done, differentiation, there might be targeted intervention. Any of those kinds of things could occur, and if they go through the process and are determined that, you know, within the school structure, what's offered within the continuum, they're not making the progress that was hoped for or anticipated, and there are questions that are existing, they, the teachers or the principal, in Wyndham's case, would meet with the principal, so Mickey could meet with himself, and review the information, you know, see if the student is in need of an education support team plan. The education support team would develop a plan if that was what was needed. They would do some follow-ups, some work, some consultation around that, and then if they're not able to achieve the progress that they, you know, were hoping for, or it's, you know, rising beyond what they're able to provide within the continuum, then that could become a special education referral. We would then meet and, as we have a central intake team this year, where we meet and take in any of the new referrals from school teams. We review all of the data that we, you know, that everybody has collected. We make sure that we have everything we need, and then we would begin the process of considering that evaluation request. Throughout the process, the design is such that families are involved and informed. So it wouldn't be like all of a sudden, again, we'd get an email or a call from us to say, hey, we need to do a, you know, special education evaluation. The school feels there are some concerns, and we want to meet. We wouldn't be doing it in that way. We would have, you guys would have, sorry, parents and guardians would have been included throughout the entire process. So that kind of describes the pathways to special education. One question that came specifically as well was around Title I, and I'm not fully in charge of Title I, but I did ask the person who is definitely more knowledgeable than me. And so the Title I funding is used, it's intended for students who are underserved and is based on poverty levels. And so if there are 40% or more of the population receiving free and reduced lunch, those funds, you know, we can apply for those funds. And so the aim is to help the marginalized students or the students with significant poverty. So we have school-wide programs. We have professional development for teachers, mentor training, tutoring, coaches. We have support for intervention and best practices, and then also supporting family engagement and any homeless situations with McKinney-Vento eligibility as well. So I did see Abby has her hand raised. Should I take questions as we go, or do you want me to wait till the end?
Whatever you feel comfortable with, Stephanie. This is your show right now.
Okay, I'm fine with that. So Abby, you can go ahead. Start.
Thank you. No, it just, is Wyndham Elementary School a Title I school? I was looking at the graph and everything online, and it was really kind of unclear. So since you were just talking about it, I thought maybe you could say, like, is Wyndham Elementary definitively a Title I school?
I am not sure. I don't know if Lori Garland, not to put you on the spot, I'm not sure if you know.
Yeah, actually, Wyndham is what they call a school-wide school. And I believe that that is, that we've applied for a waiver to keep them as a school-wide. And as Stephanie said, most of the Title I funds that, yeah, the majority of them go into the school-wide programs. And so Wyndham is a part of that.
Thanks, Lori. So the other aspect that I just wanted to outline is within the multi-tiered system of support, we're looking at two sides of the pyramid. So one side is the academic area, so reading, writing, math, those kinds of skills. The other side is social, emotional, learning, and behavioral needs. So a student could be, you know, completely fine, have all their needs met in the universal instruction for academics, but may need more intensive supports or services through the social, emotional, behavioral side, and so may have some supports in different kinds of ways through that. The aim of all of multi-tiered systems of support, our assessment system, is that kids are getting expert interaction, intervention, consultation. Teachers are receiving support. We're looking at the curriculum. We're making sure things are evidence-based and really trying to meet the needs of students so that they don't have to get to a level of near failure in order to get the support that they need. So that's the whole aim, and I think as difficult as it has been to work through Act 173 and funding changes for special education, it does already feel that our conversations are very, very different at every level because of that. So I do feel pretty positive about where we're at and where we're headed and meeting the needs of students much quicker. So. So I am open to any questions. Bill, Mickey, Lori, anyone familiar with these areas? If I've missed anything, definitely, you know, let me know. Abby, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Stephanie. So I have a question. I'm just curious where this would fall, because if there's, if there's children in a school, or students, that have some challenges with either trauma, things that they've experienced, I mean, people just gone through a pandemic, so I'm gonna, I'm just kind of throwing out there that some of these young kids have been through a lot. And with the socio-emotional behavioral issues, how is it if they're not academically failing, but struggling with that socio-emotional piece, and really challenged with, like, let's just say, expression, anger expression? When does special, when and if does special ed get involved, and how are the schools supported to deal with those types of behaviors with kids that maybe aren't doing terrible academically?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So we definitely have multiple levels of entry and support. So we have some schools who, say, it's a student who, you know, is a young student, definitely impacted by the pandemic, maybe doesn't have a lot of experience in education and routines and structures, and, you know, and they're significantly struggling and making, not making enough progress even academically because of the social, emotional, or behavioral challenges, then we can be pulled in for consultation. So we have like a behavior specialist. We have companies we're working with right now as well. So we can be pulled in in that kind of way as a consultation kind of level. We help determine like what kind of data is needed, how long it should be collected, and we've partnered with principals to even have, you know, temporary data collection, you know, person provided. And it wouldn't be through like the special ed, you know, side of the budget, i.e., I didn't, you know, plan for that, but the principal has the right to hire somebody temporarily to help with that data collection. We help with the analysis of it. We help with development of, you know, plans if students need plans. Sometimes it's a matter of us consulting with the teacher to say, oh, you know, if we build in a, you know, sensory spot or a break spot, or this, you know, kiddo has a, you know, break from, you know, coming from recess to going to a focused, you know, learning lesson, they need to walk a little bit beforehand. So we definitely help with those kinds of areas. And if we're finding that a student is not accessing their classroom, we definitely step in early and support it, especially because all of us want students to be able to benefit from the universal instruction.
I would just add that, oh, no, no, I would just add that, you know, again, great question, Abby, that a majority of what Stephanie's talking about is consultation, coaching, data analysis, and support to the classroom teacher, or to counselors that are locally employed. Those are usually, when we're talking social and emotional, it's consultation to the teacher, to the principal, and to the locally sourced counselor. So that is kind of dependent on each school and how much investment is made in those areas. But yeah, our role, as Stephanie laid out, at the higher MTSS Special Education SU level involves coaching, professional development, consultation, data analysis at that level.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with the data analysis, so that is not a cost that we are paying out of pocket, or are we? Or is that a conversation that we can need to have? Is it ongoing with, I know PJ's got, you know, counselors in there. I'm just, I'm actually coming from an angle that I just did soccer, and I'm gonna say that there's definitely some big emotions, which are typical for this age. But it was pretty, like, tough to keep, keep some kids engaged, and they had some big feelings. So I wanna make sure if that's, you know, just behavior that's right after school, or is this stuff that the teachers have to deal with? If there are challenging behaviors, how are we supporting them, and do we need more support, I guess, is a good question.
Yeah, and I think that there are, you know, there's definitely a case-by-case kind of basis. What we've been trying really hard to do across the Supervisory Union is build up what can be offered to all students. So we have several situations where we have either what's called a step room, or a thinking feeling room, or, you know, a sensory room, where kids can go and get support if they're not able to access something.
You jumped to my next question, so don't let me forget that. Go ahead.
So we definitely are working to, you know, develop those systems. And it is in, you know, in collaboration with each school situation. So, you know, a smaller school may not have the same level of needs. And so, you know, we're looking at all those kinds of things. It might be less disruptive if one kid's having a hard time, whereas in a larger population, you may have 10 kids having a harder time. So it depends on, you know, student needs, and then we're working to build those systems up. We also have some situations where it's just a classroom that, you know, feels like they would like some that, you know, feels like they would like some consultation or support around providing, you know, either differences, you know, shifts in transitions or helping kids get settled for work or, you know, needing breaks here or there. So we definitely have people who will reach out about that. So I don't know if that answers that part of your question. But the after-school piece is if it's something that's offered through the school, then it is something that, you know, we can technically provide structure or support around. I wouldn't say it's a usual thing. Oftentimes when kids are doing the after-school programs, they are more successful. So even some kids who have had one-on-one or small group parent educator support during the school day don't actually need it during the after-school programming. So there are different kinds of, you know, levels and considerations. But we rely on, you know, the school system to let us know if there's something going on and a kid is not able to access something that they, you know, have the right to. So go ahead, Abby, you had another question related to...
Thank you. No, that's not, I mean, there is definitely the normal, natural emotional dump that happens with kids. But it's already a challenging time with, you know, dealing with big feelings, right? But thank you for answering that. And my next question is you hit it with the sensory rooms. I saw that those are coming up in places. Is there any plan for Wyndham to have something of that? And so what would that look like? What would we need for, to help support that? Because I think that's not school.
Yep, so oftentimes what we do is look at the data of when a student is or is not able or students are, you know, are not able to access the classroom or curriculum or activity. So we look at that data, then we say, okay, based on this information, here's what, you know, it appears might be needed. And so in our, some of our larger systems, we found that we would have like, oh, my gosh, we need a parent educator and we didn't budget for it. We didn't realize it was going to be need, but this kiddo is having a hard time in this grade level or whatever it is. And we were trying to find a way to provide immediate support so that we're not in a surprise situation. Because especially with Act 173, we know we're not getting any more money. So we have to be really efficient with the resources that we have and meet the most needs that we can. But still specifically meet those targeted needs. So in the rooms that we have set up in a few of our schools, we have specific data collection, you know, system so we can analyze across the supervisor union what it's looking like, how often a student is outside of their class, are they only coming out during literacy times? So we're really using that data to inform decision-making and then work with school teams to figure out what we can do to improve that particular student's, you know, ability to access. Other students may just have some sensory needs. And I can, you know, I can say in Wyndham, I know for a fact, if there is a student who, you know, has the wiggle and needs to stand up during instruction or he needs to, you know, go get a turn or, you know, whatever that is definitely allowed. And I would say that's, you know, the case in most of our schools that, you know, the teachers are really observing the students and saying, okay, we got to get up third graders. Let's get a, you know, let's take a walk. Or, you know what, it looks like we need to have some quiet time. Let's do some meditation or, you know, whatever. So there are lots of things built in. I think there is a wow factor with some of the sensory objects or, you know, tools or whatever that can be bought. But it's not necessarily true that it needs to even be a space. It's not necessarily true that it needs to be a thing that is purchased. It's really the theory of meeting students where they're at and giving them what they need. So it's kind of, you know, a gesture.
Thank you so much. And then I just was curious, in that study, this is my last question, I promise. In that study, did they include, you know, there's a lot of work done on the pre-K age group. So was that data included in, especially when looking at those sensory room type stuff? If there's schools that have kids coming in that may need that? Would that be added to that data? And that's all that you said.
So like if a pre-K student were enrolled in a pre-K program in our district, is that what you mean?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. So they would also have access to the same, you know, sensory room supports, coaching support, you know, individualized stuff in the classroom? Or it could be a place like a peace place set up or, I can't remember. There's some really cool acronyms that teachers have come up with, like peace place or con corner. Like there's different kinds of things that they created. So they do have access to that. And then just a side note on pre-K. This year, we did do occupational therapy and speech and language screenings universally across the entire SU. And for any student who is attending, say, you know, different out-of-district pre-K, but they live within our supervisor union, we have also done screenings on them as, you know, when and if a parent or guardian has requested that. So what we aimed to do with that is to meet the students' needs really, really early and not have to have so much pull-out specialized instruction. Because we're finding there are some interesting trends along the way, maybe related to the pandemic, maybe not. But we're finding that there are some things that we can, you know, give information to teachers or resources or strategies or even do some really, you know, good short-term intervention to meet needs. So that was another way we addressed the pre-K. And so now, as we move forward, we'll keep doing that with the screenings and hopefully stay ahead of things so that our level of speech and language needs and OT needs are not so intensive in kindergarten, first, second, third grade. We will have met those needs early on and it will be, you know, hopefully minimized. So that's the goal of that.
Right on. Thank you so much, Stephanie. Super appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, no problem. And Russ, I saw you unmuted. Did you have a question?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
And go ahead, is that crystal?
No, I was just going to say, no. Thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else, questions for special education guru?
And one of the other things I just wanted to say is I purchased this silly little butterfly thing. I'm going to show you guys this. Phil's probably cringing right now. But what I wanted to show is that we have the academic side and we have the social, emotional side and we have universal and we have targeted and we have intensive supports on both sides. And each year informs the other. So if universal, if we find that a lot of students are needing intensive support, we're going to start looking at what's happening universally so that we can better meet the students' needs here. Because 80% to 85% of students' needs should be able to be met here. And so we want all these outside resources to be here instead of a few kids receiving them. So with Act 173, if we can minimize the number of kids who need this intensive level of support by putting the resources more at universal, which could include professional development, it could be systems, you know, development and those kinds of things, the more we can do there, the less we're going to need resources for a few kids. And those resources can literally be put into universal. If we don't and we say, oh, my gosh, you know, more and more kids are needing this intensive level of support, then the funds through an IEP, you guys know, we must provide what's in IEP. Whether or not we have money for it, we have to provide it. So we, instead of trying to say, okay, we're going to be reactive, we're trying to be proactive as an entire system and really try to get in early as a whole system, working together so that all of our gears are informing one another and supporting them.
Thank you, Stephanie. Looks like, I'm sorry, I didn't see who came up first, Michael or Bridgette? All right, can you two duke it out? Who's going first?
Go ahead, Bridgette.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Does the social, emotional learning, is there any, I have to ask because I'm seeing it everywhere. Is there any learning about gender identity involved in any of that?
I'm not sure at the universal level. I'm not quite sure. I haven't heard myself anything about that. I do know that there are some students who, you know, want to be referred to as either a different gender or have a different name. And we're very respectful of students' wishes around that. I've not heard of situations where the parent or guardian was not involved in that as well. But legally, you still have to follow, you know, the laws around that. But we haven't done, as far as I'm aware, any universal instruction on that piece. I think it's a case-by-case. But Bill, if you're aware, Mickey as the teaching principal, if you guys are aware of anything other, you know, definitely, you know, feel free to chime in.
Okay, great, thank you.
We do not provide any curriculum on that, Stephanie. You answered it correctly.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, so no curriculum in that. Okay, great, Michael.
I, well, throughout this select board, or throughout this school board meeting, rather, I've heard two parents indicate that they were, let's say, not fully informed or less than satisfied with their interactions with special education. One, it sounds like they had some sincere questions about the 504 plan with their students. And another felt like they weren't receiving all of their special education needs for their preschooler. But I'm wondering if there's a way that we as a district and/or supervisor union can look at these cases and perhaps address them? That's my question.
Yeah, all families or parents or guardians who have any concerns know how to reach me or find a way to reach me if they contact the principal or the teacher. So I can say with confidence that any situation that has come to me has been addressed. And so I would just encourage people to reach out if they don't feel like they have the information they need. I did write down the question about what if 504 entitles a student to? And, you know, it doesn't seem like that's part of this presentation per se, but I definitely will follow up on that.
Great, okay, yeah, Bridgette. Is there a recommendation from Stephanie as to what a family should do? Should we go teacher, principal, and then you? Should we go right to you? What's the best way if someone has a concern?
Yeah, I always encourage families to reach out to the teacher first. The teacher, besides you guys, those family, you know, parents and guardians, the teacher is the next person who really knows the student best and may be able to address those specific concerns right away. If they're also seeing the concerns, they might be able to say, okay, here's what we're doing at school. Let's try this for a few weeks and see how that goes. They might say, you know, I do have that question. I think I'm just going to reach out to the Special Ed department or the academic support team and just, you know, see if they have any resources that, you know, or suggestions or things that we could try. But I'd say most often than not, special education, and this will change with Special Ed laws shifting in next July. But more often than not, special education is dealing with students at the lowest 15th percentile. So we're dealing with kids who are the most intensively challenged in whichever area. And so that's kind of, that has been the model for all this time. And that will be shifting. But to prepare for that, our supervisor union has really built up our multi-tiered system of support to be able to, you know, better meet needs quicker. So, so yeah, so the short, the short answer of that long answer is to, you know, I would recommend going to the teacher first. And they have, you know, lots and lots and lots of resources with, you know, social, emotional, behavioral, academic that they can reach out to if they also have that concern. But if there's a, you know, concern of, you know, that you feel you've gone to the teacher or, you know, something and it hasn't gone, you know, either the way you felt that it should or you have other questions, you can always reach out to the special education department and they'll be happy to, you know, consult or explain stuff to you. And we promise to try not to use a lot of acronyms, but there are a lot of acronyms in special education. So we can be a resource, you know, if that doesn't get you where you need to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Anybody else for Stephanie? Okay, I feel like that was a tremendous amount of information. And obviously, anybody here and can share this with others, your best bet is to go to your teacher and then go from there. It sounds like they have an amazing system. And my congratulations to you, Stephanie, after dealing with the terrible years of COVID. It can't be easy. So I, yeah, I wish you and your staff, yeah, a lot of good days ahead on trying to navigate everything that that took from some of the kids.
Thank you so much.
Okay, here nothing else for Stephanie. We'll go on to financials. I sent them out and as Abby pointed out to me, I sent out a notification on slow down kids in the road from our summer camp. I have a new computer. So I have pay orders number 10 through 13. Number 11 and 12 are just payroll. Number 10 and 13 are our vendors, of which I only have a couple of questions. Please don't think I'm micromanaging. I always just call out any name that comes up that doesn't sound familiar to me, although I have a feeling I know what's what. I'm looking at, and Lori, I hope you're listening and Mickey, obviously you'll probably know, and Bridgette too, Kane's Electric and Powers Fire. Sounds like they all deal with inspections, fire alarm issues.
I guess, yeah. Because you have to get that done every year.
Okay. The other one is Swish White River Postodial.
Paper towel dispensers and soap dispensers.
Dynamite, never heard it before. The last one was Singer Kittredge, which looks like the food program. I'm assuming Erin is on for that. Does that sound good to you, Erin? Is Erin still on?
She might be gone, she has two fingers.
Okay, it says Singer Kittredge Food Program Supplies. So as soon as we're the new kitchen, I'm good with it.
Kittredge is a restaurant supply, so it's probably your utensils that you authorized last year.
Dynamite, thank you, Michael. I just, again, I'm not micromanaging. I'm just throwing out these names just so I don't, whatever, hear it from somebody else like Bill. That's it. So I'm looking for a motion to approve pay orders 10 through 13.
Hi, motion group.
Great, all second it, all those in favor? Say hi.
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 Dynamite, now we're on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so I provided you a written superintendent's report, but the big, big news is that WCSU has hired a new superintendent for July 1st, 2023. And that person is Mr. Robert Tebow, who is the current principal of Leland and Gray.
Nice.
So we are all very, very excited at the WCSU level. And my second announcement is that, other than Beth, we are having our retreat tomorrow.
I'm making my stand here, Bill. I'm sorry, but...
No, it is fine. I just want you to know how welcome you always are.
I'm Dover.
No, seriously, we are very excited for Mr. Tebow to not only move the district forward, but to have a good quality nine months of transition time with myself, with the central office team, with all of his colleague principals, to continue to build on our systems, to improve, to look at things from a new perspective, to see how we can go farther into the future. So I am extremely excited and all of my colleagues are excited as well. So I just wanted to share that with them.
Nice.
And that's all I got for you.
So just real quick, if Bob's just, oh, sorry, yeah.
I'm just going to point out that Bob was supposed to stay at Leland and Gray until Oliver and Jackson got through.
And we kept him in the system.
Right, yeah, he'll just be the top dog, so, there you go. All right, what about, do you have any thoughts on the next principal? Or that's up for grabs?
So I will be working with the West River Board along with the incoming superintendent on a process that will probably start cranking up after Thanksgiving.
Okay, great, okay, anything?
And where are you heading, Mr. Anton?
Mr. Anton does not know where he is going. He is flying blind and he is hoping that the universe will provide and there will be a good landing path for him come July 1st, 2023.
It was, it was my understanding, you're not, you're not flying blind. I'm fairly certain your wife is telling you what's going to happen.
Well, I am a smart man, so yes, I am following the wisdom of the family.
That's a good, that's a good thing to do, good. All right, any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, so here none. Our, right now, our next scheduled board meeting is for November 29th, I believe. But we're going to work on... But we're going to work on this school's security issue and we're going to just try and be fluid to see if we can't see what works best for everybody because we're going to be moving into the holidays. So if everybody can just be flexible with that, I will be sure to get it out to Ellen McDuffie. And Bridgette, of course, is the administrator to put that out to all the parents. Lori's raising her hand. Huh?
Lori.
Lori Garland. Oh, of course Lori, sorry.
No worries. I just wanted to just briefly talk about the, that on November 29th, typically in November you have your first draft of the budget. So just so you know that that is coming, I'll be getting in touch with Nikki very, very soon.
Can't wait.
Okay. So Lori, yeah, we're going to try and do our best to keep it to that, not add other meetings. But that's great. Thank you for reminding us. That's important. Okay, anything else from anybody? This is your last chance. Okay, take a motion for meaning to adjourn. Okay, I'll do it. Meaning to adjourn. Yeah, all right. All right, I'm psyched. Thank you. Good night, everybody.